And we will call the April 20th Board of County Commissioners to order. Please stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic from which it stands, just in one nation, under one God, with liberty and justice for all.
In our prayer for the morning, Heavenly Father, we beseech your divine guidance in this meeting. Keep us ever mindful of our obligations. Grant us, dear Lord, wisdom, tolerance, and courage that we may well serve our county and fulfill our trust. Amen. Due to the miracles of technology, we have Commissioner Hambley joining us from Columbus. He is attending a CCAO meeting on Task Force, I believe, down there. So thank you, Steve, for joining us by Zoom. And he has to leave by 10 o'clock this morning to join his other meeting. So with that, Colleen, could I have a motion to approve the minutes?
I will make a motion to approve the minutes of April 13th.
And I will second that motion. Any changes? Roll call, please.
Hambley?
Yes.
Sweattick?
Yes.
Hudson?
Yes. And because of Steve's time constraint, we're going to make a little bit of a change in the agenda. We are going to do the commissioner resolutions up front. Pull them out of my packet here. So we have four resolutions that are recognizing individuals for going through different programs here in Medina County. So the first resolution is recognizing those individuals that graduated from Junior Leadership Medina County Class of 2021. And we have a rather long list. So I'm going to read the names, but I'm not going to read the schools that they come from. I better get my water ready because I'm going to need this. So Zach Bomer, Andrew Chand, Aiden Cogly, Hannah Eccleberry, Stephanie Fox, John Paul Fida, Charlotte Garant, Abby Habegger, Gabby Ild, Riley Kerber, Sidney Kindrat, Lydia Lanier, Lily Latkovic, Peter Marinelli, Hannah McLeod, Evan Misseli, Maddie Miller, Kaylee Moran, Nick Nagel, Georgia Nielsen, Sophia Novak, Alex Poliga, Grace Pantalone, Caitlin Pierce, Ellie Radabaugh, Olivia Rood, James Scavuzzo, Lexi Seesock, Emma Sillsky, Catherine Solico, Gray Smith, Faith Webb, Maddie Zaccaro, Jessica Bisassar, Katie Borla, Emma Bush, Anna Burns, Gabriel Byrne, Mia Chan, Jason Darrell, Katie Duke, Anthony Fraser, Alessandra Goyette, Elizabeth Gramofsky, Caitlin Herman, Eva Hollingsworth, Eva Hollingsworth, Cassie Hooper, Kayden Klein, Ananya Campella, Maggie Kristen, Angie Lau, Luke Melina, Lauren Markward, Ella McNutt, Rachel Murphy, Bruce Newlands, Olivia Ortiz, Summer Ostendorf, Nick O'Sullivan, Elise Patton, Vinnie Fall, Natalie Piatak, Jody Sada, Maddie Silver, Reagan Simpson, Leah Stidham, Jackson Steelwagon, Nora Sublett, Emily Stratman, Anna Taylor, Anna Feese, Drew Thomas, Anya Van Kirk. So congratulations to all of the Junior Leadership Medina County Class of 2021 graduates. And I apologize if I mispronounced anyone's name. Could I have a motion to approve?
Move to approve the resolutions.
Thank you, Steve.
Second.
Got a motion in a second. Any comments? Again, I'd just like to congratulate all the Junior Leadership Medina County Class of 2021 graduates. Roll call, please.
Hambley?
Yes.
Sweattick?
Yes.
Hudson?
Yes. So our second resolution this morning is recognizing the graduates of Leadership Medina County Signature Class of 2021. And those graduates are Matthew Addis, Jennifer Roman-Anzalone, Gary Blake, Charisse Boyd, Angie Bradich, Steve Butler, Dan Carter, Brian Corbin, Taylor Celeste DeClareco, Kristy M. Dobbs, Danielle Finding, Kevin Hack, Becky Hambley, Robert A. Jalaskow, Edward C. Hopson, Lori Jevorsky, Laura Kettering, John Liebler, Stacy Malakar, Matthew Neal, Aaron Plouche, Jason Sanders, Brandon Todd, Gabe Tudor, Bradley Virgin, Brad Winter, Kim Wolf, and Lori Zoss Kroska.
Move to approve the resolutions.
Second.
Got a motion in a second. Any comments? Again, congratulations to all the Medina Leadership Signature Class 2021. Roll call.
Hambley?
Yes.
Sweattick?
Yes.
Hudson?
Yes. The next resolution is a resolution commending those that are being named as outstanding seniors by the Medina County Share Cluster for 2021. And those individuals are Emmett Kalawowski, Carlee England, Angela Case, Margaret McGinnis, Matthew Baumiller, Lily Porta, Colton Sadowski, Colette Loughlin, Molly Stillwagon, Chase Markey, Rowan McDonald, Weston Manzier, Emily Watkins, Colin Kalina, Alexander Miller, and Kara Griffin.
Move to approve the resolutions.
Second.
Got a motion in a second. Roll call, please.
Hambley?
Yes.
Sweattick?
Yes.
Hudson?
Yes. And lastly, we have a resolution commending those that graduated from the Leadership, Exploration, and Development Institute, the Class of 2021. And those individuals are Christopher Anzavino, Nicole Aggra Racus, Megan Bates, Brian Elliott, Brittany Erdos, Bailey Ewing, Ty Fritz, Mark Griskowitz, Mason Harper, Andrew Kabina, Sarah Lynn, Lori Minor, Brooklyn Mott, Danielle Rozavi, Amy Smoyer, Ashley Stevens, Kaylee Telagonis, and Samantha Wankovich.
Move to approve the resolutions.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Hambley?
Yes.
Sweattick?
Yes.
Hudson?
Yes. So congratulations to all that participated in those programs. I know that it's a lot of hard work and time and dedication required to get through them. So thank you. And we will now move on with the rest of our agenda. So we're going to move on to our resolutions. And first up, we have Andy Conrad, our County Engineer, and standing in is Dan Becker.
Good morning. Excellent job reading those names. I've got some resolutions for your consideration today. The first resolution is accepting and awarding the project to install pavement markings on various Medina County roads. There's a resolution here determining the necessity to close Canard Road between Ballish Road and Westfield Road, the necessity to close Canard Road between Ballish and Westfield Landing Road, we need to close, the necessity to close River Corners Road between Holshoe and Simcox, a resolution accepting and awarding the 2021 Medina County Item 422 Resurfacing Bid, and a resolution accepting and awarding the 2021 Boston Road Improvement Project. And our permits for the week.
I move to approve the six resolutions.
Second.
Got a motion in a second. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Hambley?
Yes.
Sweattick?
Yes.
Hudson?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dan. And we will move on to Amy Lyons-Galvin, our Assistant County Administrator. Good morning, Amy.
Good morning. I have 14 resolutions for your consideration this morning. The first one is amending the Appropriation Measure Resolution. The second is amending the 2021 Appropriations Resolution by transferring appropriations. The third resolution is expenditure adjustments for various funds. Fourth resolution is cash transfer for various funds. The fifth resolution is authorizing the county auditor to transfer funds from various county department accounts to the Medina County Vehicle Maintenance Revenue Line Item. The sixth resolution is authorizing the county auditor to transfer funds from various county department accounts to the Gasoline Rotary Fund. The seventh resolution is the creation of a Board of Elections Health Grant Fund and authorizing appropriations. Eighth resolution is creation of a Sheriff's Office Jail Capital Improvement Fund and authorizing appropriations. Ninth resolution is creation of the Sheriff's Office Extradition Reimbursement Grant Fund and authorizing appropriations. Tenth is the creation of the Sheriff's Office Transportation of Prisoners Fund and authorizing appropriations. The eleventh resolution is the creation of the Medina TV Fund and authorizing appropriations. Twelfth resolution is allowing expenses of the county engineer. The thirteenth resolution is allowing expenses of county officials. And the last and fourteenth resolution for me today are approving claims for the week in the amount of $961,008.44.
Move to approve the 14 resolutions.
Second.
Got a motion in a second. Any questions or discussion? Roll call, please.
Hambley?
Yes.
Sweattick?
Yes.
Hudson?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Amy. Next up, we have Holly Muir, our Human Resources Director.
Good morning.
Good morning, Holly.
On our personal changes resolution today, we have a new hire at County Home, eight rate increases, one in finance, one in office for older adults, and six in sanitary, two leave of absence in sanitary, two resignations, one in building, and one in HR.
Move to approve the resolution.
Second.
Got a motion in a second. Any questions? Roll call, please.
Hambley?
Yes.
Sweattick?
Yes.
Hudson?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Holly. Next, we have Jeremy Cinco, our Sanitary Engineer.
Morning.
Morning, Jeremy.
Two resolutions for you today. First is authorizing the sanitary engineer to enter into an agreement with GT Environmental to assist the Medina County Solid Waste District with temporary management services. And the second is authorizing a memorandum of understanding with Chippewa Lake Village to replace existing sanitary sewer laterals and water main as part of the village's Clover Cliff Drive Road Improvement Project.
I move to approve the two resolutions.
Second.
Got a motion in a second. Any questions or discussion? Just one comment, Jeremy. Thanks for working with Chippewa Lake.
Oh, no problem.
They express some concern about not having their roads torn up after they were redone.
Well, I can understand that. So, thank you.
Thank you. Roll call, please.
Hambley?
Yes.
Sweattick?
Yes.
Hudson?
Yes. And next up, we have Shannon Ryan, our Transit Director. There he is.
Good morning, how are you?
Good morning, Shannon.
How's everybody doing? I just have one resolution for your consideration today. It's actually an awarding of approving the acceptance of funds from ODOT for 2021 Rides for Community Immunity. It's a grant program. Many agencies around the area in the state are using these specifically for trips for vaccinations. I've been talking to ODOT about how we can best utilize these. We've been in preliminary contact with the Health Department here locally, but in many cases, folks are finding their way there. We don't have a centralized area necessarily on a very large scale, which is what Cleveland, for instance, is doing at the Wolfstein Center. But we have till 2020, end of 2022 to utilize the $104,000 to provide these trips. Many of our agencies are providing those trips right now, but we're tracking that. It's a small number right now, but we're going to leverage those funds to do that.
I move to approve the resolution.
Second.
Got a motion to approve in a second. Any discussion? Just one question, Shannon. So do you need to document and use that money specifically by individual for a trip?
ODOT's given me some latitude to do that. And anything medically related, even if it's a follow-up. So we're tracking all trips too that would be non-agency that mention. We have a way of asking the customers, the passengers, are they going? And many times, they go to pharmacies to pick up something, but sometimes they're going for the vaccination. So, but it could be followed with their doctor and other related medical trips.
Okay. All right, thank you. Roll call, please.
Hambley?
Yes.
Sweattick?
Yes.
Hudson?
Yes. Thank you, Shannon.
Thank you.
And we'll move into our department updates. First, we have Richard Nelson. Good morning, Richard, our Chief Building Official.
Good morning. Good morning, everybody.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning. So you've been emailed those reports. I assume you have in front of you. Page one at the top, the amount of monies being spent compared to last year is up considerably, around 40%. That's, you know, overall monies spent in construction. And then moving down, with the average cost of new homes jumped again for March, $470,000. Last month, reported $424,000 on that line. Now, that's likely due to the spiking in material prices, and it's likely going to get worse. But, yeah, that continues to rise. In spite of that, our new home starts at the bottom of the page is right on par with previous years. So that's good. Second page is March receipts, up quite a bit, 20% up from last year's March. And the third page is year-to-date receipts. It's also up a little bit after being reported last year, last report was down 2%. This report's up almost seven for year-to-date receipts. So that's also good. And of course, the remaining pages are the breakdowns per townships and all the small tidbits of information. Other things in the department, yes, our clerk who was part-time and then became full-time in September is leaving us. Her last day is tomorrow. I don't have any plans on replacing her all too quickly. Megan had filled in for her while she was off for three or four weeks on medical leave. And Megan did a super job of covering for her. And so we're going to probably keep that, that type of a scenario going for a while and see how things shake out. Same with our inspector who we lost, you know, left us a month ago. Pretty much the same scenario, wait and see how the, how the year shakes out before we look at trying to replace him, make sure there's a need for that first. Our state reports, I had mentioned in my last report that we were catching up on, on the state reports, we're supposed to give the Board of Building Standards. Those reports were missed both in, for the year 19 and 20. Those have been sent in now, and we're on the verge of, I missaid that, 18 and 19 had been sent in. The report for 20 is on the verge of being sent right now. That's, so we're pretty much caught up on those state reports. And I think that's pretty much all I have to report.
So, Richard, there was one large commercial project in March that was approved, and it looks like it is Cloverleaf Schools. Is that?
Yeah, that's, that's quite an expensive project, probably. It's our stadium, new concession stand, real nice new big restrooms, and ticketing booth, a whole big, real nice entrance to the stadium. It's underway right now. Yes, it's quite a, quite a project.
Our numbers jumped significantly for the month year over year and then also year-to-date year over year because of that.
Yes. Yeah, I was, comically, there was confusion. Some, there was two inspections scheduled for there yesterday, and one canceled, but the wrong inspection got canceled. And so they were in a panic. They had concrete trucks sitting there and no inspector to look at their footers. So I made a rundown.
So we got it handled and?
Jumped in, jumped in the Jeep and ran on down there.
Excellent.
Yeah, worked all right. And that's a tough one for them because of the kids when school lets out, you know, the whole scenario. They're all, all footer foundations can be difficult, but, you know, there's this little bit special because of the environment there.
What's the turnaround time on commercial and residential permits? Are we?
We're still good. That's not going to slip. It's always going to be three to five days for residential and, and about three weeks for commercial. I did take, I took last week off, and so, so there's probably a couple that are definitely three weeks old right now. But, yeah, that's going to remain, that's going to remain. The only other item we have or I can comment on is, you know, we have a real good plan examiner. She keeps up real well. She does the bulk of our stuff. And we also have two additional examiners that I don't send too much to.
These are commercial plans?
Commercial plans. And, but I also realize I have to keep them involved because our main examiner might have an issue and, you know, not be able to take care. So I've been sending some to the other fellow, but he's not, he's had one over three weeks now. So that's going to cause a problem. I'm not sure. I don't know. I can't send everything to the same examiner.
Right. Right.
Or at least it's not a good, not a good thing. So that, that's something that needs, needs addressed. And it's in his contract. He's only got 14 days. So he's, he's out of his contract.
Right. Okay. Any questions, Colleen or Steve?
No.
All right, thank you, Richard.
No questions.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you for your report. And average home value now is $470,000.
It is incredible.
That's, yeah, that's enormous. It's an enormous number.
Yes.
All right. We will move into, oh, wait a minute, we have Bethany Detler. Sorry, Bethany, our Economic Development Director.
Well, just to put a little bit more, I guess, meat on the bones from that great data. I love the data. We have seen a lot of economic development activity in 2021 so far. Countywide, we're tracking 50 companies which altogether have made $44.7 million of new capital investments, and they have absorbed or committed to build over 117,000 square feet of space. Looking forward, there's also a great deal of business expansion activity in the pipeline. We have interest throughout Medina County, but at the moment, we have a number of projects targeting Valley City and Harrisville Township. Brunswick is also seeing a lot of activity. In the business visits and meetings that we've held over the past quarter, we're seeing a robust recovery, particularly in the construction and consumer and industrial goods manufacturing, to the point that inflation is now a bit of a concern. Many companies have increased their starting wages significantly and are offering hiring bonuses. We've also heard about the issues businesses are having in logistics and transportation because of the shortage of long-haul truck drivers, backups at ports of entry on the coasts, as well as supply chain issues, particularly in steel. I've heard about wood, semiconductor chips as well. So our office has been involved in multiple conversations among local manufacturers and our federal congressional representatives. We're sharing information about industry concerns and the, and the needs of local businesses. It was quite eye-opening for some of our local elected officials, and we're hoping that these concerns will be taken into consideration in future federal efforts. Diving in a little bit more to workforce concerns, this really is the biggest issue that our companies are facing right now. We're seeing over 500 open positions in the manufacturing sector alone. With county unemployment rate of 3.6% and a workforce participation rate of over 80% in Medina County, the majority of our residents who are in the labor pool are working. The workforce participation rate is a big deal because the national average is 67%. So we're well above that, that figure. Couple other things that we're doing, thanks to some extra funding that has been available this year. We're working with the Summit Medina Workforce Development Board. You're on that, on that COG, as well as Ohio Means Jobs Medina County. We're putting together a social media marketing campaign to promote manufacturing jobs and careers, and that can be very helpful to those businesses for workforce recruitment. We're also partnering with the Medina County Auditor's Office and Medina Metropolitan Housing Authority. We're planning on doing a mailing to targeted residents to drive attention to the worklocal.net website, which features job openings just in Medina County, and there are plenty. Our first virtual high school and middle school career, I'm sorry, our final virtual high school and middle school career fair is being held tonight. This one focuses on healthcare, but over the past couple of months, we've done career fairs in professional services, manufacturing, and engineering. I will just say to that, I think it's a good effort, but the kids seem to like in-person better than virtual. This past quarter, we also sent information to all seven school districts and both vocational programs about jobs in Medina County. One other thing that we're doing, our office coordinates what's called, what we call the Talent Pool Document. It lists the names of all of the employment candidates that are available through our workforce partners, including Ohio Means Jobs, Job and Family Services, the Board of Developmental Disabilities, probation, and more. They, these individuals work directly with the job counselor to help find work, and so we're encouraging companies who are hiring to reach out to those individuals about job openings. That talent pool list is updated weekly on a website, everybodyworksmadinacounty.org. Wanted to give you a couple of updates on some other current initiatives. House Bill 123, we've been tracking that for quite some time, and if it's passed by the Ohio Legislature, it would significantly change how the community reinvestment area property tax abatement program works in Ohio. That is quite a well-used program here in Medina County to great effect. It really is one of the most valuable tools that we have, and the proposed changes would significantly impact the level of transparency and accountability of the program. I testified last month to the Ohio House of Representatives Ways and Means Committee as an opponent to the bill. And this month, I spoke with the bill sponsor to see if they're open to any amendments that would make it more reasonable and less harmful to our local school systems. I would not say he was very open to that, but I, after that conversation, I did send in some amended language that would allow for at least a job creation requirement. That language was not among the amendments they discussed last week, but there's another committee hearing this afternoon, so we'll find out if they're going to further amend it or vote it out of committee. But I am hoping to, that Steve can help me get in front of the Senate sponsor soon to discuss those concerns. Regarding NOACA, I wanted to thank the commissioners for your leadership on responding to the proposals in the Long Range Transportation Plan. As you know, we have grave concerns about the economic development implications of that plan. A draft of proposed policy recommendations was recently released, and just in reviewing it, we just have major issues with some of the policies, particularly around incentives and data gathering that they're putting forth that would affect our office. I've asked our regional economic development partner at Team Neo to take a look at the proposals and try to gather feedback from the five counties in the NOACA footprint so that Team Neo can weigh in as well. And I'm sure you're already aware, but just wanted to remind everyone, there's a virtual NOACA meeting on Monday, May 3rd at 6:00 PM. You don't need to pre-register. It is a Zoom webinar. I'm sure, I don't know if Rhonda received the email, but I've got a copy. I'll drop this off with Brian Rhonda in case anybody wants to get that link and attend that event. Just as I wrap up here, in my January report, I had mentioned that we were working on expanding the Medina County Energy Improvement District. Right now, it's just the city of Medina, but we want to use some of the new tools that the state legislature has provided. Our Energy Special Improvement District Board met last week and voted to approve a project in the city of Brunswick that opens up the city of Brunswick for property owners to take advantage of the Property Assessed Clean Energy Program. The other item that I wanted to mention is the 2021 Medina County Business Awards Program. It's being held on October 26th, sponsored by Westfield Bank. This year, we are accepting nominations for companies in four award categories for both -- This year, we are accepting nominations for companies in four award categories for both 2019 and 2020. We kind of missed celebrating those companies last year, so we're, the categories that we're celebrating are Capital Investment, Business Growth, Outstanding Community Advocate and Entrepreneur of the Year. So we're asking that you and our business colleagues who may be watching, please consider nominating individuals, companies or customers who might fit that criteria. There's no limit to the number of candidates you might nominate. The deadline is June 1 for that nomination, so to nominate, just send us their contact information and which award you're nominating them for before June, the end of June, beginning of June. You can direct those emails to Sherri Patterson in my office, s.patterson@madinacounty.org. And that's my report.
Thank you, Bethany. A couple of questions.
Sure.
You mentioned that there's 117,000 square feet of?
New space that's being planned.
It is going to be newly constructed space.
Newly constructed, correct.
So given that they're building new space, the old, the old space must be fully absorbed? I mean, it's got to be pretty close.
There are, I would say, a very few vacant industrial properties. That's been one of our challenges when we get leads from the state and we want to say, hey, Medina County is a great place to attract these businesses, I have no space to put them. So it is an issue. You know, we would love to see developers develop speculative industrial real estate because they tend to get absorbed very quickly.
Very good. And the one project that we had down in Westfield Township ended up in?
Yes, they, they couldn't, they wound up not being able to wait to construct a building, so they actually bought a building up in Valley City and they are in the process of renovating that. That's the company in the headline a few weeks ago that's planning to create 150 new jobs over the next two years.
And was that the old Shiloh plant?
No, they bought, they bought, Shiloh is in that park, but they bought the old Independent Steel building.
Oh, okay, all right.
So it's nice to see that vacant building absorbed and that company.
It's a great company.
Yeah, that's been vacant for a while.
Yeah, a couple of years.
Right.
Do you think you're going to be able to hold your event in October in person?
That is our hope. I've, I've been talking with the Health Commissioner early in the year about some events that we have later this summer. We're hoping to do an in-person. It's an outdoor summer cookout in July and, you know, if all goes well, we're hoping to be able to do that outdoors and then have an in-person event in October, yes. That'll be very special.
I know you sent the NOACA letter out.
Mm-hmm, yes.
To a lot of different folks and I saw an email or two. Did you get much feedback from?
A little bit of feedback. I received a letter from Cuyahoga County official who gently pushing back on our assumptions, but there were some other folks who were very grateful that we had taken that lead. We've been in conversations with colleagues throughout the five county footprint and there are a number of others who found what we had to say quite eye-opening and I think they're going to pay more attention to the issues because they're not necessarily happy about the direction either.
The direction does not give many benefits to Medina County.
No, it does not.
So I think it's definitely worthy of continued discussion on the commissioner's part.
Yeah, yeah. Would you forward the one response you got on?
Sure, I'll be happy to.
From the Cuyahoga County person?
Yep, I will do that.
I will be interested in seeing it.
Me too.
Okay, I will.
All right, thank you.
All right, thank you.
Let's move into discussion session. Scott, do you have anything?
Just the Montville Township?
Yes, let's talk about that.
So you all received an email from Montville Township regarding a builder who is building a model home in preparation for the Parade of Homes. And the building department, the plans were submitted, the building department had reviewed the plans, approved the plans, but they were waiting on the zoning permit from Montville before they issued an actual building permit. Apparently, there's an issue with Montville and the builder and so they have yet to issue the zoning permit. So the email from Montville was really requesting, you know, the commissioners issue a stop order. But, you know, it's a zoning issue, it's not a building issue. So I guess I would, I would recommend that we let Montville know that, hey, you know, you need to enforce your zoning and once your zoning permits have been issued, we will then issue the building permit.
Just, just for clarification on one issue, Richard, or Scott, whoever wants to answer, we don't issue inspections unless we've given a permit. And is that a miscommunication then that we need to?
That's correct.
Yeah, Richard, would you come up to the microphone? Because we're Zooming it, we need to make sure that the folks can hear it.
If, until they have a permit, we're not going to do any inspections because the inspection itself is similar to or tantamount to giving them permission to proceed.
And I, that is perfectly reasonable, but Scott, if you would reach out then to Montville and explain that we're, we can't do an inspection until we have an official permit?
That's true and I believe Montville knows that. I think that Montville was upset with me because when I found out about it, I also didn't issue a stop work order, which they had already done or had done multiple. We can do those also and I hadn't taken that action.
But did you have the plans?
Yes, oh sure. But, but we were informed that they were going to start. The builder called. He just, he called and said, you know, we don't get, we're not getting our zoning, I need to start my model home. You know, he just said, I'm moving on without it.
But did, did, did you have the plans approved at that point? I mean, you had done your review?
Yes, but that's, yes, but it's kind of immaterial because they didn't have zoning and couldn't get a permit.
But I guess from, from Medina County standpoint, we did what we needed to do and we're ready to roll.
Correct.
If Montville Township would have issued their permit.
Correct. And when they do issue it, we're ready to roll.
Yeah, so.
Yes.
And, and I guess it's not really material from our standpoint whether Montville Township is ready or not or what their holdup is, but we're ready to move as soon as they resolve their issue.
Correct, correct.
Yeah, I would appreciate, keep, keep lines of communication open with Montville zoning and so this can get resolved quickly.
And in their, let's see, the matter got made worse because I didn't share the information that I knew with our residential building official. And then when Montville called and I was away, they ended up talking to him and he was in the dark.
Yeah.
And, and that made the situation worse, made us look worse.
Yeah.
You know.
Open communication will be great.
That was, that was really the, the big part of the problem.
Right.
Thank you.
All right, thanks, Richard. So I guess, Scott, the message is to Montville Township, we're ready to roll.
Okay. And then the only other thing I wanted to talk about is we still don't have any guidance really on the monies that we're receiving from the federal government through the, what, American Rescue Plan?
Have we heard from CCAO on when this is coming?
No, there are some web, webinars, I guess scheduled for the end of next week.
Yeah, I went to the one and it was very, was it last week there was one, it was like a half, it was very generic. I didn't feel like there was any substantial information to it, the one I went to last week.
No, no, we got, we received an email yesterday or, I think it was yesterday or Friday, I guess it was, basically saying what you have to have prepared in order to receive the money, which is a DUNES number and you have to have, be registered with SAM. And we've got all of that. So we're ready, we're ready to go, we just need to.
Have you heard the solidified dollar amount yet or is it still speculative?
No, it's, it's right around 35, 35 million over, I think it's half of it, half of it sometime in mid-May, I believe, and the other half then in 2022.
The 35 stayed consistent from what you?
Yeah, from what I've seen, I've not seen a new number, so.
Well, I don't, I don't think we can sit down and offer suggestions until we see the rules.
Right.
Right. I mean, I've got a lot of ideas, but I don't know, we can use the money. So as soon as, as soon as we know anything, we will let you know.
So Scott, do we have a separate fund set up to receive the money?
We will have to set up a separate fund, yes.
Okay.
Yes, similar to what we did with the CARES, CARES funding, we'll have a separate fund, everything will go into that fund and then all the expenses will be made out of that fund.
Right.
So we'll be able to track it.
So the money may hit the fund before we know what we can do with it?
Yes, that's very possible.
Yeah.
I think they're still in discussions from, I don't know, I'm just hoping it's expanded from last year's rules. Last year's rules were very COVID-specific expenses and revenue losses, so an expansion, if it's truly going to be considered a rescue plan, rules need.
I think, at least from what I have seen, which isn't much, but the areas that they have focused on are not necessarily directly COVID-related. I mean, one of them is broadband.
Broadband, you have fiber.
You know, which has not a lot to do with COVID, you arguably say that some.
The argument on that being related to COVID was kids staying home from school and internet access and things like that.
But, you know, some of the other categories, I think there were five of them, were rather nebulous in what was or wasn't COVID-related.
Fake.
Yes, and so I, we just need more definition around what we can use it for, by the way.
I think it would be great once the rules came out if we then all came together collectively with our ideas and had a roundtable on.
Yep, yep, I agree.
Yeah, I think the first webinar is scheduled for next Thursday, I think it's the 29th.
Is it going to be another one of those general ones or?
I'm, I'm hoping it'll be more specific.
Yeah.
So probably.
Is this a CCAO webinar or?
No.
No, this is the, the state.
Yeah, it was the state.
Yeah, administrative services, the AS. So probably the first week of May, we'll have an update for you as, hopefully we'll have more information, we'll be able to start planning how these, the monies that we receive.
Should, should we start planning on how we're going to plan for spending or utilizing, investing the money? In other words, should we have a special commissioners meeting or two and invite Bethany Dentler and Jeremy Cinco and other county folks?
I think, yeah. Do you think that maybe the three of us and Scott have an initial meeting with our individual ideas and then, then invite the departments that maybe were suggested for more details on their projects?
Yeah, I, I'm open to whatever.
Yeah, I, I've got, I've got a list of, of things that I would like to do with the money.
Right.
And part, and part, yeah, and part of that, yeah, and part of that is, you know, I know we've talked about fiber and the fiber ring and I know that Jeremy has some water projects that he needs to do. There's some things we need to do at the county home. There's some things that we need to do, some other air handling equipment that we need to install and some boilers and stuff like that and obviously there's a need at the jail. So I have a, a pretty long list of ideas that we'd like to bring to you to look at and then if you are okay with those ideas, then we can get into some of the details with some of the departments.
And at that meeting, if one of us has an additional idea, that could be brought forth.
You can add it, absolutely.
So I think, I think a meeting with the four of us, it would be public, would be, would be a good first step.
So I guess my, my question is, do we want to have a separate specific meeting?
Yeah, I think.
I mean, I think that would be very helpful.
I do too.
To just focus on this one topic.
Right, I do too.
Okay.
We could even stream it from the room right here. Because obviously we would all have paperwork and ideas and proposals.
Okay, all right.
So maybe, maybe we could set it up for like the third week in May after we have the first check in the bank, hopefully.
Hopefully, sure.
And, and do something, even, even if, as far as I'm concerned, even if we did something on a Tuesday afternoon.
Absolutely.
But a separate specific meeting just to talk about what we're going to do.
All right.
That would be zoomed out to the world just like any of our other meetings, yes.
Right, yeah, it's a public meeting.
Okay, and Rhonda can set that up.
Okay.
So, all right.
All right.
All right, thank you.
Jeremy?
Hey, I just have one thing here. So a few, about a month ago, we passed resolution with Jones and Henry. They did the engineering for the north pump station for the additional pumps that we needed to pump the wastewater from Sharon up north to 18. During their initial estimate, they had a not-to-exceed amount of 30,700. That estimate was based on, they were supposed to get plans from the pumping manufacturer. Well, the pumping, the plans they ended up receiving were not complete enough to, to get the plans out, so they actually had to come back, they had to come over to the pump station, they had to measure basically everything out and relay, and lay everything out that they were assuming was going to be completed by that pump manufacturer. And additionally, there was some additional electrical services that they needed to have done at the pump station due to missing record information that we didn't have or from the original design. So they are requesting an additional $12,600 to cover that additional work that they had to complete. So if, you know, if it's okay with you, I'd like to go ahead and present a resolution next week to amend that original resolution to reflect these changes.
So Jeremy, it was clearly work that was not contemplated.
Correct, yeah. Yeah, the idea was that the pump manufacturer came in, well, we were, met with the pump manufacturer, they measured everything out. I think when the pump manufacturer realized that we were going to have to bid this out, they kind of scaled back their, the amount of work that they were going to do on the project. So the plans that they provided, the engineer were, were not as complete as originally thought, so.
Yeah, yeah, I'm okay with it.
Okay.
And, and one more thing, I'm okay with that too. One more thing, we saw some emails with some issues on a project in Sharon with some staging area issues. So I would just appreciate it with the excavator, whatever he needs to make Sharon.
Yeah, we have.
With the staging area.
Yep, we'll work with the contractor in Sharon, even Sharon Township, I should say, offered to help find another staging area for them, so.
I mean, Jeremy, is this, this is not, it's a transient issue, right?
Right.
I mean, it's not going to be there for very long.
It's part of the project.
Yeah, well, right now, we're waiting on, the contractor is supposed to provide us a new, some additional pricing to where we had originally thought we were going to have to bore, or we could bore the sewer lines and water main. We're going to now have to open cut just due to some rock that we encountered in about a 4,000-foot stretch of the road. So it's just going to slow everything down, so we're going to target the force main, the sanitary force main first, then the water, but you know, at a, you know, if we're assuming about 100 foot a day that they're going to be able to get through the rock, then that's 40 days just for the sewer and then you have another 40 days for the water, so.
So it is a little longer.
It's going to be, yeah.
Okay.
So, but we'll, we'll take care of it, so.
Thank you so much.
Not a problem, thank you.
Thank you, Jeremy. Richard, do you have anything additional?
You do.
Bethany? Colleen?
Wadsworth, the city of Wadsworth is going to, for some funding for a downtown infrastructure and street escape project, so I had written a letter of support and you and Steve are, okay, so after the meeting, we will send it out then.
Yep.
Thank you.
Rhonda, do you have anything?
Good.
All right, can I have a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn?
I will second, roll call.
Swin?
Yes.
Hudson.
Yes. Thank you, have a great week, we'll see you next week.